Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Moody?
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flankis is excused. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Here.
Commissioner Creer?
Here.
Commissioner Cherry?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Moving on to Item 4. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the Agenda for Action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 5. This is for possible action to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meetings of October 13, 2015. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Planning Commission minutes from October 13, 2015.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Motion is to approve those minutes. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Moving to Item 6. These are housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Chairman? Sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Quinn.
Are we pulling items from the one motion, one vote?
This would be the time to do that.
Okay, I would like to pull Number 10, please.
Okay, so you want to pull Item 10 off the one motion, one vote. All right, we'll pull that down. Are there any other housekeeping items? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Item 7, SDR 61069. The applicant has requested this item be tabled so that they may reevaluate their plans. The item will be re-notified when the application is ready to proceed. Item 14, GPA 60750. The city requests that this item be tabled so that additional research may be conducted. Items 15 and 16, SUP 60378 and SDR 60379. The applicant requests that this item be held in abeyance until the December 8 Planning Commission meeting, as they have made revisions to their development plans that will require re-notification. And the last housekeeping item is Item 20, ZON 61035. The applicant is requesting that this item be withdrawn without prejudice.
Excuse me through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to pull Item Number 10. I didn't know it was in the El Cortez Hotel. I thought it was a freestanding building because I did not do my homework. I spoke too soon, so I don't want to pull it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the request has been made with regard to Items 7, 14, 15 through 16, and 20. Does anyone wish to speak on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman?
I would just like to clarify. Item 14 is GPA 60759. I think Ms. Reed read in 60750. It is 60759. Is that correct? That's the correct number. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Schlotman, your motion on these housekeeping items.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to table Items Number 7 and 14, holding abeyance. Items Number 15 and 16 to the December 8, 2015 Planning Commission hearing, and withdraw without prejudice, Item Number 20.
Okay, thank you. The motion is made. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Moving on to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. We'll begin with Item 8, TMP 61324, The Meadows 2. The applicant owner is Cloudbreak Las Vegas LLC. For possible action on our request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision at 525 East Bonanza Road and 602 Encanto Drive in Ward 5, staff recommends approval. Item 9, SUP 61347. The applicant owner is 515 Fremont LLC. For possible action on our request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,250-square-foot tavern limited establishment with 300 square feet of outdoor seating area at 515 Fremont Street in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 10, SUP 61348. The applicant is John Chase, and the owner is Ike Gaming Incorporated. For possible action on our request for a special use permit for a 2,892-square-foot massage establishment with a waiver to allow 24-hour operating hours, where the hours of operation are limited, to between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. at 600 Fremont Street in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 11 is ROC 61355. The applicant is Toros Cantina &amp; Gaming. The owner is the Vista Common Center LLC. For possible action on our request for a review of condition of an approved special use permit to delete Condition Number 1, which states, quote, "The hours of operation shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. daily," unquote, at 11760 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Item 12, VAC 61244. The applicant owner is 1015 Novat LLC. For possible action on our request for a petition to vacate public drainage easements generally located north of Cliff Shadows Parkway and west of Novat Street in Ward 4. I do need a public hearing on this. Open this for, do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none? Any discussion among the planning commissioners? Seeing none, we'll undertake a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on Item Number 9, I'll be abstaining due to ongoing business relationship with the applicant. But in saying that, I move to approve Items 8 through 13, subject to staff's conditions.
8 through 12.
I'm sorry, 8 through 12.
All right. Motion is to approve Items 8 through 12, noting the vice chair's abstention on Item 9. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Item 8 is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within seven days. Items 9, 10, 11, and 12 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Beginning with Item 13, DIR 61099. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. This is for discussion and possible action. On our request for a review of the preliminary plan for the expansion of redevelopment Area 1, staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report?
Good evening, Chairman Moody, members of the Planning Commission, for the record. I'm Bill Arnt, and the Director of Economic and Urban Development for the City of Las Vegas. This item is part of an effort to look at our existing redevelopment area and look at areas and ways we can improve our redevelopment plan, which is the document that explains how we're going to implement the redevelopment area. And there are really two things that we're looking at as part of this action, and I'll explain why we're here before you today in this body. We're really doing two things. We're looking at the existing area and what areas adjacent to the existing redevelopment area would be good candidates for adding into the redevelopment area. We're expanding the existing area. And then, second, there is an extension of the existing life of the Redevelopment Agency that's authorized by statute, and the redevelopment plan is proposed to be extended to allow us more time to continue some of the things that we've been doing. So I'll cover both of these items. This is the existing redevelopment area map. There are three colors on this map. I realize at this scale, it's hard to see streetlines of what is exactly where, so these areas that are highlighted, Project A, Project B, and Project C, are not projects per se, but they're areas of emphasis, and we zoom up, zoom in on these areas to show the streetlines and what areas are directly affected. The area that's highlighted in the pale yellow was the existing area of the Redevelopment Agency, which was added in 1986. And by way of a little history, redevelopment's been around for a long time in Nevada and in the U.S., and it's really a fiscal tool to help areas that are in decline. And so the theory behind redevelopment is, absent some public intervention, areas will continue to decline. The areas are experiencing some form of blight or disinvestment, and when that happens, property values tend to go down. When properties' values go down, property taxes go down, and that declining property tax revenue can put a strain on a municipality providing services in the area. It can create a disincentive for new private investment. In short, a disinvestment tends to lead to more disinvestment. So the theory and the thinking behind redevelopment is, you look at existing area, and with property taxes declining, instead of letting that continue, you set some boundaries for an area, and you look at the tax base at that time, you add land into the area. So for us, that started in 1986. The core area of downtown, for instance, was added in 1986. That had an assessed valuation at the time at $398 million, and it had been declining year over year at the time. So you look at that tax base, and at that year, at that point in time, all the existing tax revenue that's coming into all the various jurisdictions for all the various services that those jurisdictions provide, that keeps coming into those jurisdictions. It's only new property tax revenue, or tax increment revenue, above and beyond that base year, is set aside for redevelopment agencies, with some exception. There are some voter-approved overrides. There's also a set aside for, originally for affordable housing, now for affordable or long-term housing and education. But the concept is that those new tax revenues, or tax increment revenue, is set aside and must, by statute, be reinvested back in those areas for redevelopment. So that area in the pale yellow was added between 1986 and 2006, 2007. The color that's the melon color, or the darker shaded, that's running down Charleston, Sahara, as well as Decatur, that was added in 2012. We're not here for that second shaded area, the 2012 area. That's Area 2, and it's a separate area. We're looking to add these three areas in red to Area 1, which is the area shaded in yellow. With that, maybe I'll pause, just see if there are any questions before I move on. So moving on, these are some maps showing the areas that are directly affected. A couple of points to make here as we look at areas to include in the redevelopment area. This action before you, as well as the final action that would, if we're, if we have a favorable recommendation and it moves forward to the City Council, we are not envisioning any change in land use. There's no change in zoning. There's also no change in the tax liability for an existing property owner. So property owners, they get their taxes. There's a uniform tax rate for property throughout the City of Las Vegas. What is different, as I described on the last slide, it does affect where your taxes go, where they're distributed to. So for properties that are inside the redevelopment boundaries, those property owners, if they look at their tax bill, will see a distribution to Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. If you're a property owner and you're not inside the redevelopment boundaries, you won't see that distribution. So the tax payable by the property owners is the same regardless of where you're in the city. It really just affects the distribution of where your taxes go. This area, which was Area A, or Project A, on the previous map, is land that we're proposing to include, and it includes land immediately, pardon me, immediately west of Martin Luther King and the area generally known as Las Vegas Medical District. This is an area that we think is ripe for reinvestment and redevelopment. As many of you know, the University School of Medicine, UNLV School of Medicine, is planning to go inside this district. We think that's going to lead to additional opportunities for new investment. Historically, this area has not benefited from a lot of new investment, and the general area does, we do see areas of blight. There is a piece of this, a piece that is in Ward 1 and a piece that's in Ward 5. The secondary, Area B, is land that is in Ward 5, and this is land that is, generally speaking, north of Washington and south of Owens Avenue. And you can see here the streetlines here. This land is also on both sides of the I-15 corridor. And you'll notice in these maps, the area that's cross-hatched in light blue, and I appreciate it may be hard to see on the screen, given the quality of the image, the area is adjacent to the land that's cross-hatched in blue, and that's, the reasoning or the thinking behind it is, we're trying to add some areas which are immediately adjacent to the existing redevelopment area. And our thinking is, oftentimes with redevelopment, we will try to help new commercial projects, new mixed-use projects move forward. But increasingly, we're putting money into infrastructure, not to replace monies that the city has available for new infrastructure, but a lot of these areas are experiencing decline, really are in need of an extra boost. We did that, for instance, on D Street in this general area, south of Washington, where we put money from the Redevelopment Agency to improve that streetscape, above and beyond the condition which the city would normally do, again, to try to attract new private investment into the area. Then finally, the third area is what we've called Area C, or Project C. This is in Ward 3. You see here Maryland Parkway, and then you see also some lands on Sahara Avenue. Again, this land immediately abuts, the land that's cross-hatched and outlines in that blue frame, strategically blue on blue, and it really is, it may be hard to see. But again, it's immediately adjacent to the existing redevelopment area, and the thinking is, in this area, with some of the planning that we're doing through the city's downtown master plan process that the city's doing, I should say, we see that there's a big opportunity for new investment along the Maryland Parkway corridor. RTC is holding a lot of stakeholder workshops on what improved public transit or mass transit might look like in the future. We think this is of strategic importance to be able to connect our greater downtown area to the rest of Maryland Parkway, including UNLV, and ultimately, potentially, a connection to the airport. That's the kind of big-picture thinking that goes behind when we consider this kind of action. Do we include land in a redevelopment area, and do we want to try to allocate resources from the Redevelopment Agency to help improve this area? A little bit about the project area, the parcel information. There are 902 parcels with 480 acres. It's, sounds like a lot of land. To put it in context, the Area 1 existing is just under 4,000 acres, over 3,900 acres. So it's a significant increase, but it's, we think it's a reasonable increase. This slide is really shown to point out one observation that our staff had when they compared the preliminary plan and the blight findings for this area, is that there's a lot of area or land throughout all three areas which is tax-exempt. The land is tax-exempt in these areas for a number of reasons. Some of them are property that's owned by government, some it's owned by nonprofit, some by religious institutions or places of worship. With redevelopment, we don't require property owners to sell their property. We support transactions with willing sellers and willing buyers. We're not looking necessarily, as a redevelopment agency, to go in in a big way and acquire land in these areas. From time to time, we do acquire parcels, but again, we've done that on willing seller, willing buyer transactions. But there is a lot of property that is tax-exempt, more so than citywide. And so we think with smart planning and with the consent of the property owners, there may be some opportunities for new commercial development in some of these areas, which would take these parcels from being tax-exempt to taxable, which would improve property values, but also improve tax revenues, not only to the Redevelopment Agency, but ultimately, long-term, to the other tax jurisdictions in the valley and in the state. So this step, again, it's a public hearing to consider the preliminary report, and we're seeking a recommendation of approval of this plan to take it to the next step, which is City Council. That will be a public hearing. If Council, taking the recommendation from Planning Commission, does act to move forward with the proposed expansion, then it would go through an ordinance process, which would begin on December 2. We'd then have to go to the recommending committee, and either one or two additional meetings, depending on the ordinance process, could be adopted for final action as early as December 16, or the first City Council meeting in January of 2016. With respect to the extension of time, one of the things that happened at the last legislative session and a couple sessions before is, they recognized that our regional economy has been through a big downturn, a big recession. The idea behind redevelopment is that it doesn't go on forever. When we created our Redevelopment Agency and the redevelopment plan behind the agency, it had a 45-year life. And the idea and the thinking behind it is, while real estate investment takes time, turning around an area takes a lot of time, as we've seen in other cities throughout the U.S., the thinking is, eventually, you won't need to set aside these special funds for reinvestment, and the area will be just as competitive as the rest of the region. We went through the recession, property values plummeted, we, again, started to see some disinvestment in our redevelopment area. We are seeking an additional 15 years to add on to the life of the Redevelopment Agency. It's currently due to sunset in March of 2031, being a 45-year agency. We're seeking an additional 15 years, and that 15-year timing is written into the preliminary plan and would be part of the consideration moving forward at City Council. So the action tonight is for you to review the preliminary report, to consider the expansion, adding those areas in red into the redevelopment area. We do have a full blight study. One of the requirements of state law is to go and look at parcel-by-parcel, property-by-property, and do we see evidence of physical decline or blight in these areas? And so we've documented that with photos, with written report from staff, and we do believe that these properties do meet the requirements of the statute to be added to redevelopment. Second, you're required to make findings that the proposed expansion conforms to the 2020 Master Plan. We believe that it does, that what we're trying to do is very consistent with the Master Plan, and also, as I mentioned, we are not proposing to change any land use within these areas. With that, I'd be glad to answer any question that you might have, or also, at your discretion, Chairman Moody, if you'd like to open up the public hearing and take comment, could do that as well.
Okay, I will open this for public hearing. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Armando Monares. It's 3521 Gloucester Gate, Las Vegas, Nevada, 9122. I actually, yeah, this is the first I hear of this plan area. Earlier today, I have an application here. Items 23 and 24 are mine, and I'm actually in this Part B of this redevelopment area. I got a phone call today from Councilman Ricky Barlow's office. One of the gentleman called me and said that they, because of a new master plan that hasn't been established, my application doesn't meet their zoning, the land use, and their expected plan for the area. Although it is still not approved, I am being held to something that is not public record. I comply with the current, current standards, and staff recommended approval of my application. And I, you know, the office of the councilman called me and told me that we're going to pull it off and push it into City Council, because Councilman Barlow cannot, doesn't approve what I'm doing there, because he doesn't comply with his general map that isn't even in the record. I am not opposed to redevelopment. One of the things that you mentioned is that there has been lack of funding to try to develop the area. Well, I'm here to say I'm trying to, and I'm being stopped by something that isn't yet code. So I don't, I don't oppose the area being sent out for redevelopment. I just want to voice my opinion that there, you know, at least there's one that wants to do something there for the area, and it's being stopped by something that isn't code yet. So all I ask is that whomever has their applications in be allowed to continue through the current code, the current land use, the current zoning, and whatever the current statutes are for the area. And as I mentioned, for my items, staff recommended approval. I met with them. I thought everything was good to go until earlier today, when I got a phone call saying that, you know, that I should withdraw my application so that I could discuss it with councilmen and see what else they can do, and they can show me the plan going forward and how it will benefit me. But a lot of the way that my project works is apartments, is six-jointed apartments, and it meets the densities for the master plan, for the land use. And the, you know, why it's not being approved is because it doesn't meet the plan that they have going forward, at least not from a councilman level.
So which item is yours?
It's 23 and 24, sir. It's in my building.
Okay, so those are going to be heard tonight?
Yes, sir.
So you're welcome to, you'll speak again when we call those items. But I appreciate your comments with respect to this.
Yeah, on this issue, all I'm asking is that I'm all for it. It's just that I, it'd be good if the current applications could stay to current, you know, to current planning and current zoning for the area. You mentioned that there would be no change in the land use and so-on change. I heard something different today, and so I just wanted...
If you would, sir, make your comments this way. You need to speak through the chair.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
All I ask is that that be considered, you know, that people that have already applied and have their applications in line, that they be considered to current code, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the commission. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes. Mr. Arnt, thank you for your presentation, Rich and Romeo, and appreciate everything that your office does. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if I could just go back and forth and ask several questions? Okay. So for expansion area B, why was that never included in the original RDA 1?
We had went, Vice Chair Schlotman, for the record, Bill Arnt, we had went to the community several times, and whenever you're doing something of this nature, it's really important to explain what you are doing and what you're not doing. And I think there was some general misunderstanding from the community about what we're trying to do with redevelopment. We, as a city, did use... We, as a city, did use eminent domain as the redevelopment agency in the very early years of the redevelopment agency. We have since adopted a resolution from the agency board stating a policy, and that goes back to 2006, and that policy remains to date, that we will not use eminent domain to take from private to private. There was some fear that, from the residents, that the city, through the redevelopment agency and the auspices of the agency, would use eminent domain to take their personal residents or their property. It took some time to explain to the residents what we are doing. I think a lot of the investments that we've recently made in the area has really changed the community's perception of what we're doing. We've built up more trust with the community so they appreciate. And in the past, they said, "We do not want this land in the area," so we actually pulled it out. You can see it does look awkward that it's contiguous, and why would you stop? Since then, they're actually one of the biggest proponents of adding this area. They see that the benefit that comes with redevelopment, they'd like additional development and investment in their areas, so they've asked to be added into the, into the plan.
Okay. A few of the comments. You know, the, why, why do we choose to put like the medical district in RDA 1, and why not put in RDA 2?
Yeah, thank you again, Vice Chair, for the record, Bill Arntz. Good question. There, there's, if redevelopment area that was established before 1987 can have up to a 45-year life, and now with the recent changes at the Nevada legislature, up an additional 15 years or up to a 60-year life, new areas, if you add them, can only have a 30-year life. So part of it was timing, as far as what the length of the area would be. I, I think our other thinking is that the, the, that area in question is immediately adjacent to the existing Area 1, and the way we're drawing the medical district boundaries, we think it makes sense to connect the dots and make it adjacent to Area 1. There's also a distinction, and it wasn't, I didn't address it during the presentation tonight, but we really have an option of expanding an existing area and keeping a redevelopment area, an existing area, and just adding on and making it bigger, or we can create new project areas. When we do that, we have to manage the finances separate, separately. In other words, the funds that come out of Area 2 have to go back into Area 2. We have separate sets of financials and financial statements, accounting records, so that areas truly are separate. And we, for, for both of those reasons, we thought it made more sense to connect it into Area 1.
Okay. One of my problems was when we expand it into, from RDA 1 to RDA 2, my biggest concern was we're going to be taking funds from RDA 1 and then use them in RDA 2, and y'all told me it wouldn't happen, and it hasn't happened. And, you know, because, I mean, there's been a lot of people down here fighting for downtown over the past 12 years, and longer than, longer than I've been here. You know, all of my work has been downtown. Commissioner Cherry's built two, two high-rises downtown. Truesdale's been pushing for downtown. Michael Corinth Wade, you know, the list goes on and on, all the bar owners, the, the people building residential, Tony Shea. I mean, there's been a significant amount of redevelopment in our area, which has taken years and years and years of work for us to get it to where it is today. And now we're adopting, that was why I said I don't want RDA 2 and RDA 1 to hurt what all the efforts that we've already made in RDA 1, now that we're increasing the property values and we're starting to get this, help me out, the tax increment revenue. I don't want this tax increment revenue going over to a different ward or a different RDA where it's supporting that area. I mean, we need proponents in RDA 2 that will stand up for RDA 2, and we need the Sam Cherries, and we need the Michael Corinth Wates, and we need those people from that area to stand up and say, "Hey, we want, we want our RDA 2 to be better." So if we incorporate expansion area, the medical district, expansion area B, and this Maryland Parkway corridor, and Maryland Parkway corridor makes most sense because there's this whole plan of connecting UNLV back up into downtown. So that's actually bringing more people in. But if we're taking all the funds that is being generated, and we don't keep focusing them on downtown and the current redevelopment area, and then we start building streets and sidewalks and things like that for these other depressed areas, that should come out of the general fund. It shouldn't come out of the redevelopment fund that we've been fighting for, for 10 to 12 years. I mean, the city needs, from my personal standpoint, and this is nothing against redevelopment agency, and you know that I love you and, you know, your whole group, and I've worked with you. Y'all were the first people I met when I, when I come to town, and I continue working with you, and I've sent people your way here recently with some, some great projects. But I think it needs to start coming from the general fund, I mean, because it's mainly a residential neighborhood. I have tons of, tons of people in my ward, East Las Vegas without streets. Are we going to put them in the redevelopment area to put, put in sidewalks? No. That needs to come from the general fund. So I just have an issue with incorporating this into RDA 1. I don't have a problem with extending the life of RDA 1, but I don't want to cripple all the good things that the redevelopment agency has been doing. And I'd like to see y'all continue spending the funds to help all the people that can't afford to build their businesses or put that sign up, or, you know, all the other great programs that y'all come up with. So I don't know if you want to comment on any of that, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you. I, I tend to agree with your sentiment, Vice Chair Slottman. I think the really important point is, is that these resources are limited. You're right, we can't spread them out everywhere. We tried to be strategic about areas to include. We tried to limit the acreage as much as possible. There were some property owners that were farther away from the core that wanted to be added that we actually declined at this point because we don't want to spread ourselves too thin, which I think is really the heart of your, your comment. If I could paraphrase, and, and we share that sentiment. Our, the flip side is our budget's starting to recover. Our budget for fiscal '16 is over 15.7 million. We were in the high 12s toward the, toward the bottom. So our, our annual budget is starting to recover to where, as long as we manage it well and manage it appropriately, we think we can continue doing what we're doing in the core and, and still help some of these, these additional areas as well.
One more question, Vice Chair. Is there a way to create like a new RDA for, for these particular areas? Or is that just going to be cost prohibitive to do that due to the different accounting measures and everything else that you have to do?
Fair question. It's a good question because we really wrestled with that question for Area 2 when we did the expansion in 2012. I don't know that it's so much as managing the separate set of books that is really the big obstacle to get over, but it's more just a fiscal strategy is how we improve this area. And if the area is too small, remember, once we put that land into the redevelopment area, that establishes the baseline. And so kind of a way to think about it is if there's zero appreciation of property values, and there's zero new development, which I realize are extreme examples, but if you follow that construct, if there's zero appreciation and there's zero new improvement in the area, then there's zero revenue into the agency for that area. So if the area is too small, or doesn't have a lot of new commercial development opportunities in it, the likelihood, even if we set it up as a, as a new area, would be, would really just be a paper area and would sit on the books for a while until revenue would start to come in. So it, there's really, size does matter. It really, if it's too small, it really doesn't make sense to set up anywhere.
Commissioner Trebridge.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks for the excellent presentation, but I, I do have a question that I might have missed. Have the property owners of the privately-owned property asked to be included in these redevelopment areas?
Commissioner Trebridge, it's really a combination. So some of the property owners, I was answering Vice Chair Slottman's question, when we did the prior expansion, they asked, "Don't include us," but then when they saw the benefits, they, they called up our office, they called up their councilperson, said, "We do want to be included." So we have had some requests for inclusion, but just so I don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going any other, I'm going any other direction on you.
The, the board or, or the listening public, we have not had a request from every single property owner in these areas. That's not the idea. The idea is we try to draw the map that where, the way we think is, makes the most sense and benefits.
Right.
The redevelopment. So we have had some requests to be included, but it's really a staff determination which parcels to add, and that's why we're going through this process.
So the answer to the question is no. The property owners have not all requi-
Not, not every single property.
Had the opportunity to say, "Leave me out." That's my point. Because they are going to suffer increased taxes, right? And we plan on doing this without their approval.
Well, Commissioner Trebridge, that's, that's an important question, and I, so the answer to the tax question is not necessarily. And I'll, I'll give you an example. If you're, if you're a property owner in this area, and I think the map that I had currently have on the screen, the, I'm not sure what shape, I was going to call it a shaped piece, I'm not sure what size or shape that parcel is, but the Sideways Horseshoe, that, that big red piece on the top there, which is north of Altive, if I'm not mistaken, is an apartment complex that's privately-owned. If we include them in the redevelopment area, and they don't do any improvements to their property, and property values don't increase or decrease, there's no impact to their taxes. If they're, even if their property values increase, with or without redevelopment, their property tax bill is still the same if they're in or if they're outside redevelopment. The only difference is where their property taxes go. So if they're outside redevelopment, when they look at their tax bill, they can see all the agencies they support. If they're inside, there's going to be a line on their Las Vegas redevelopment. But it's not necessary, it's not necessarily the case that their property tax bill will go up. Now, it's true if the entire value, if the entire area experienced increased property values, then tax rates are set against values, so their, their rates could go up, but they're also benefiting from.
Got, got the taxing end of it.
Property.
What, what, if you look at the overall picture that shows the redevelopment agencies, they're not straight lines, they're, they're jagged. There's parcels that were included and parcels that were intentionally excluded.
Correct.
And that happened as a result of public hearings and things like that. I remember years ago, people coming forward and, and speaking opposition to be included, and they were taken out of the plan. We haven't used that approach this time apparently.
We, Commissioner Trebridge, we've offered that approach. So if, if there's been a property owner, after hearing our explanation of what we're doing and the benefits of redevelopment, the potential impacts to their property, whether direct or indirect, we've offered property owners, if you want your property removed, let us know. Send us a letter in writing. You're correct, in past expansions, we have had a number of property owners send us letters. We haven't had that this expansion. We have done community meetings, we have sent letters and notices to all the property owners. We held meetings as recently as just a week ago Monday, so.
So where I'm going is that this gentleman that spoke, that he had, he had plans approved, a project that he was considering, that were in compliance with the existing rules. And now, because we're considering changing them, he's been put on hold. It's sort of like getting a, a traffic ticket for exceeding the speed limit because Metro's considering raising the speed limit in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it just doesn't make sense.
Commissioner Trebridge, I, I agree. If that, if that's what's happening, I, I would agree with that. And I don't know if Director Peregrino wants to comment, but aside from what we're doing tonight with this action, with the redevelopment plan, I know there is an effort in the West Las Vegas community where UNLV has been working on a plan that would be a recommendation to the city to look at differences and changes in land use and potentially for the general area, doing different things with transit, those kinds of things. We're not doing that today, so whether, whether we approve or disapprove the redevelopment expansion, I don't believe will have any bearing on that gentleman's application moving forward. So again, I, I can't speak for the councilman, but I, I, that's my inference on what's happening, but I, I don't know what the councilman should, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, you know, everybody.
Director Peregrino, if you have anything to add?
Everybody knows that retroactive laws don't work. But proactive laws, in this case, seem to be working. Okay, I, I understand the situation. It doesn't mean I agree with it, but I understand what you're trying to present. Thank you.
Director Peregrino.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, the planning effort that the gentleman, the applicant on the, the items coming up talked about, it has no relation at all to what Mr. Arntz is presenting here. That is a project, as Mr. Arntz had, had said, that the Downtown Design Center, UNLV, has been working on. Some graduate students, as well as faculty there, have been engaging the community and has spent quite a bit of time developing a vision and a plan. We have reviewed that, or at, at least the key elements have been presented to us. At this time, it is not a, a document that's been presented for consideration of the council to adopt or incorporate into our master plan. At the same time, we're working on a downtown master plan. But again, and the medical district plan, and a lot of these plans are all related and will eventually come to the Planning Commission and City Council to adopt certain of those elements, but right now, it's all in the planning stages.
Thank you. Commissioner Cherry.
Mr. Chair, through you, for disclosure, I do own property in the RDA, but feel like I can talk and vote on this item.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I indicated to the commissioner that it doesn't affect him any greater or lesser than any other property owner within that area, and he's able to vote on this item.
Thank you.
Same thing with Mr. Slottman.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I'd just make the same disclosure. Own a property in the redevelopment area, built the community, didn't use redevelopment funds, and my property is finished, so I will not be benefiting any greater or lesser from the action that comes on this today.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cherry, with your disclosure, you do have some comments?
I do. Through you, Mr. Chair, for Mr. Arntz. I, I am having a little, you know, tough time warming up to a, a few different items. For example, RDA 2, with its new lifespan of 2042, and if Project A, why it can't work within that, it just seems to me if, if we don't have a medical district that's up and built by 2042, we've, we've, you know, failed miserably. So, you know, that's, that's one comment. And just, it concerns me to spread the resources then of RDA 1, you know, like the VIP program and the, the Quick Start program and all the different efforts that have been made in the past. And I, I do agree with Commissioner Slottman about Project C. You know how that, I could see that being a good fit in that area with all the concentrated efforts. Project B, it, it just seems to me, you know, kind of a Johnny come lately wants to jump on the, the redevelopment area, you know, when they want it to be excluded, and kind of take out, spread the resources even more than is, it's concerning. The question, one question I had is, how does this affect, once you get an extension of time on RDA 1, the ability to restructure the bonds to hopefully find a savings in the RDA? Because I know that was a big concern a couple of years ago when everyone was lobbying for that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through you, Commissioner Cherry, you're exactly right addressing the last question. We do have a good amount of debt on the redevelopment agency's books. A lot of that debt was made in 2009. And while '09 may not feel like the peak of the recession, property tax revenues trail, so it was almost the worst time for us to issue debt. It came at a high cost, but we thought it was worth it for important projects. There is the ability to look at not necessarily new debt, but refinancing that existing debt. And today, our redevelopment agency is due to expire sunset in the year 2031, which sounds like a faraway time, but it's only 15, 16 years away. So for us to issue new 20-year bonds to take out or refinance the existing 2009 bonds, we couldn't do that because our agency expires. So that sunset extension, that life extension past 2031 would allow us the potential to do new 20-year, 30-year bonds. It would be adding debt on the tail end of the agency, but the flip side is it would be some immediate cost savings, we believe, in excess of $2 million annually, which would go, could go immediately into these areas. Not only into the areas in red, but to the existing redevelopment area in that pale yellow as well.
Mr. Chair, through you, I, I guess one, one concern I had, there was a specific- Mr. Chair, through you. I, I guess one, one concern I had, it, there was a specific, uh, imposition the state had on the, how you valued projects in an RDA, uh, till we could get to a point to actually consider the restructuring of bonds. It was kind of a test, and were we able to get to that point to even consider it?
Um, thank you again, Chairman, through you, to the Commissioner Cherry. Uh, we, we have. Uh, the legislation did change a second time in the last session. Uh, we've hired an outside firm, applied analysis. Uh, they did a thorough review and are, are doing a second review leading into the, uh, anticipated council meetings next month. Uh, and they're finding that we do meet the test. Their final report, uh, will be available on record, but we believe we meet all the statutory requirements. So, now it's really following the procedure, uh, set up in statute, which is, uh, why we're here today. We have to go through Planning Commission to see if there's any impact on the master plan. Uh, hopefully I've covered that. Uh, and then, uh, following the recommendation from the Planning Commission, the City Council would hold a public hearing, which we're planning on doing. But to answer your question, yes, we, we believe that we do meet the statutory test.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, and I've always been a big proponent and advocate of the RDA and the wonderful work that the whole team does. It's just at some point, when an RDA gets momentum, it's almost like, uh, you need to hold the line and the areas adjacent to it will kind of get the benefit of what that RDA has actually done, and, and how far do you actually go before we come back and add another RDA section, another RDA section. Um, so, those are my comments and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, I think that, uh, in reference to Expansion Area B specifically, I think that the sword cuts both ways. Um, because how do we ensure that, once we are included in this, this area is included in the redevelopment, uh, area, that it gets its fair share of resources as well? Um, and I, I wouldn't say that this area is Johnny come lately. I think that this area has been, uh, fighting for equality, fighting for, uh, the right expansion in this development for years. Um, I think that the F Street ex- expansion and the bridge is prime example of what could happen if, uh, resources are not put into that, in, into that area. So, uh, you know, the area wants to be included in the expansion of the state and the growth of the, I say the state, the growth of the area, the growth of the city, the development of the area, the development of the city. But it has to be done in a way that is, uh, conducive to the residents of that area, because there are a lot of residents that have been there for a very, very long time. And, um, I, I would love to see something happen over there. So, how do, I mean, as we approve this and get going with this, next steps, how do we ensure that we get equal, um, equal thought and equal expansion as the redevelopment area grows? Because it's gonna grow. We're already seeing that.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Carrer. Through you, Chairman Moody, to the Commissioner. Uh, the fair share question is, is an important question. I, I think you framed it appropriately. Uh, we have an annual budget process to show where our funds go. The funds for past projects, we do have some debt for some of our large projects, but as our budget picture improves, we do have some new money for some new projects. So, I think the annual budget process, we are increasingly trying to be as transparent as we can. Uh, we post every transaction on our redevelopment website. So, whether it's a $25,000 grant or a big project, uh, we post all those transactions 14 days ahead of the item. Uh, one thing I think we have to do, and, and it was alluded to earlier for a different reason, but our redevelopment plan is not an investment formula, per se. It doesn't say that you're gonna invest 20% in this type of project and 20% there, or 20% in this neighborhood and 20% in another neighborhood. Uh, so, it does give us some flexibility. I think we need to be smart with our investment. I think you're right, Commissioner. We do need to engage the community, and we're committed to doing that. I think we need to work closely with, uh, the plan that was referenced earlier, that 100 plan that UNLV has been working on. Uh, again, it's not part of the city's master plan now, but if, uh, whatever future changes, uh, happen to the city's master plan, uh, that city master plan really is not just the master plan for land use and to where to guide, what use, where uses go, but it's also a plan for how we address community problems and community issues. So, we want to invest smartly. We want to look to, uh, our city planning team. We want to look to the future and look at what, uh, new plans are on the boards. Uh, so, we talked about on Maryland Parkway. We're adding that because not there's a need today, but there's maybe a need in the future. And we want to take that same mindset for, for this area also.
Commissioner Quinn.
Through you. Um, well, Ward One's really excited about the medical district, and I just wanted to make a comment for my fellow commissioners. Um, we're gonna see a lot of, uh, applications for properties, for business offices, for doctors and this and that. And I, and I feel that a lot of those parcels are so very small that we're gonna see a lot of overbuilt sites with no parking, and there's no, um, you know, uh, overhead parking, there's no underparking, they're gonna be all over the streets. So, my comment is to make this as great as we can with as much as they have to work for, and to work very willingly and able to turn this into the medical district, because every day that I drive through there, it feels like the medical district more and more, and I, it's, it's happening, it's there, it's coming. And, and I think any way that we can improve upon it and fund it is absolutely essential, not only for the Ward One, but for the city in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Quinn.
Are we on number 13?
We are.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of approval on Director's Business 61099.
Motion is to approve item 13. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at City Council on November 18th, 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to related items 17, 18, and 19. 17 is an abeyance of GPA 61258. The applicant owner is the School Board of Trustees for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from SC, Service Commercial, to PF, Public Facilities, on the southeast corner of Lakeme Boulevard and Pink Rose Street in Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. Item 18 is ZON 61259 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to CV, Civic in Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. And item 19 is SDR 61267 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 55,000 square foot building for a public school primary use in Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the, uh, staff report?
Mr. Chairman, it's my privilege to introduce Nicole Edo, who's one of our up-and-coming planners in our department. She's gonna be presenting this item.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed project is an expansion of the existing West Prep Academy. The expansion includes replacing the existing 25 portable classrooms, or classroom buildings, excuse me, with a permanent classroom building to house the elementary school aged children, additional outdoor recreational areas, and 65 additional parking spaces for staff and visitors. Staff supports a requested general plan amendment and rezoning, as this will allow West Prep Academy to remap the entire site into one cohesive educational facility, and finds a waiver requested in association with the site development plan review to be minor in nature and supports that request as well.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman, um, Commissioners. Linda Perry, 4190 McCloud Drive, representing the Clark County School District. I'm very happy to bring forward to you our new building on West Prep Academy. It's been a long time coming. Um, I have with me Dom Cambaro, who's the architect. If you have any questions about the building itself or the site, he would be more than happy to help answer those questions.
Excuse me, what, what was the name of the school? I didn't hear you.
Um, West Prep Academy.
West Prep Academy.
That's kind of the abbreviated.
Thank you.
Um, but we have read the report, and we agree with all staff's conditions, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? See, now I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the commission? Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is an expansion of the school. This is not a new school, correct?
Correct.
On the corner? I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the school.
Okay.
I've voted there. Uh, do I have to abstain because I vote there?
No.
Okay, good.
[laughing]
Um, and it, it has been a long time coming for this, for that school to get developed, so, um, I am 100% for it and, um, glad to see you here.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other discussion. I think we're ready for a motion.
Great. I will make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the abate item GPA 61258.
Motion is to approve item 17. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 18, uh, ZON 61259.
Please vote. That motion also carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a general item 18, SDR 61267.
Thank you. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I- Mr. Chairman, item 17, 18, and 19 will be heard at City Council on December 16th, 2015.
Thank you. And since we have you here already, we're going to pull item 29 forward. That is SDR 61346. The applicant owner is the School Board of Trustees for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved plot plan review for a proposed 110,238 square foot building for a public school primary use, with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter and a zero-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west perimeter, where a 15-foot landscape buffer is required at 2900 Wilmington Way in Ward One. Staff recommends approval. May we please have the staff report on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing 53, uh, classroom building and replace it with a 36-room building. The project is compatible with existing single-family and multifamily in the area, and rec- staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And good evening again.
And Commissioner, Chairman, um, Linda Perry, 4190 McCloud Drive, representing the Clark County School District. Um, this is our new replacement school for Rex Bell Elementary. Again, this is another school that is really in need of replacement, so we, again, have read the staff report, agree with all the conditions, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard? See, now I'll close the public comment. Any discussion on the commission? Commissioner Carrer?
Sorry. Nope.
Commissioner Quinn?
Um, if there's no comments, I'd, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
Thank you. The motion would be to follow staff's recommender, recommendation for approval on SDR 61346.
Thank you. The motion is to approve item 29. Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to related items 21 and 22. Item 21 is an abeyance item, SUP 613, sixes, 61031. The applicant is Crescent Capital Partners, and the owner is Monaco Properties LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through use at 6408 through 6446 North Durango Drive, uh, in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. And item 22 is SDR 61034 for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review for a 2,795 square foot expansion to an approved 45,447 square foot shopping center in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in September 2015, staff administratively approved a minor amendment to convert a proportion of the existing parking garage to additional general retail space. The applicant is requesting a second amendment to enclose an additional 2,795 square feet of parking garage. Because the second amendment includes a restaurant with drive-through, a special use permit, and Planning Commission review of the development plan is required. The conversion of parking spaces to general retail space would require an additional 11 parking spaces and eliminate 14 parking spaces from the existing parking garage to make room for the expansion. However, the shop, the shopping center would maintain an exist, in excess of 17 parking spaces and still be in compliance with minimum parking requirements. Staff finds this request is compatible with adjacent uses and is designed in a manner that is compatible with the existing shopping center and recommends approval.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Jeremy, uh, with, representing the client, 175 East Warren Springs Road.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Jeremy Strawn.
Thank you.
Uh, we're proposing to remodel a portion of the existing site that has a open-air garage. The portion of the site is kind of to the east, which has a kind of open-air garage, and we have a previously approved, uh, 4,100 square foot, it remodeled to the garage, which kind of occurs in the middle. And the new project is proposed to be built next to it for a fast food drive-through lane, kind of in between these two buildings, this one being the restaurant use that's proposed. Um, with the amount of parking that's existing in the site, uh, we're proposing to, you know, take away some of that parking, but we're still overparked, so we feel that, you know, it's not a big issue to remodel this corner of the garage. Um, this being the corner of the garage we're, we're proposing to remodel. Right now, there's a, kind of a trash enclosure and some window openings. We're kind of proposing to open those windows to make it a, a larger, more open storefront for some retail use from the street, from the street and sidewalk. Um, staff is recommending approval. We ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from you, sir?
Um, my name's Kevin Marsh. I'm here to represent the owner. Um, I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have, Dr. Carrer.
Okay. Thank you. Going to open this for public comment. Looks like we have a few gentlemen here that wish to be heard. A few gentlemen will step back so that they can have the mics. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Herbri Bra. I'm, uh-
Can you step in front of the microphone? There you go.
Name is Herbri Bra, address 6750 Coston Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I am a tenant in the current building where this project is, and actually, I am the first and most old, uh, tenant in there. I've been there for six years. In those six years, that building had been through large entities, Durango Structures, Blackstone Capital Group, uh, Monaco Properties, and now Crescent Capital Partners. And we have a parking issue from day one as the building, the way it's built, it's not, it's not delivery friendly, and there's not enough parking for any of the building, because the way it was structured, they walk away with building this underground parking garage to get into compliance. But this parking garage, as they admit, they never was used. So, we are, the parking's not even enough for any, any business pretty much. We always have people kept pulling in, and they pull out because they don't have any parking there. And we had approached landlord, uh, multiple times, and they had not addressed the issue. And I don't see how adding more retail to it will address the parking problem we have as it is. And Congressman Ross, actually, he is a customer into a grooming place right next door, so he had experienced this issue himself, and we had approached him, and he is well aware of this. And he had approached, I think, the, uh, landlord to, to see if they will have any kind of resolution, but so far, we hadn't heard anything back from them, or any kind of plan that how will they handle it by adding more retail to it, which will require more parking for employees and customers. And that parking garage, as they admitted, is not being used. Nobody parks there. So, I would like to pose this, and I want to see if they can explain somewhere how will that problem be alleviated by adding this retail to it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, yes, my name is John Sarita, 5429 Rosso Street.
Can we turn that microphone on? There, there you go. It's on.
There we go. Thank you.
There we go, thank you. So once again, we're just kind of reiterating our concern with the parking issue. Even without this proposed structure being in place, it's already very, very cramped. The amount of businesses that's in that area creates such a jam. And that's not even, you know, also including the thing that he said with the deliveries. There is no really precise site for any business to get deliveries in that area, which kind of creates a jam, so to speak. We also have a yoga place, which has about 30 to 40 people several times a day, take up about all those spaces for one to two hours a day. There's also several restaurants in this plaza as well, which has people come sit down and eat for long periods of time. I don't understand how the structure that he says is being built underground and taking away those spaces isn't going to be an issue, especially when there's also three or four businesses that still haven't been built out yet. So I don't know how we exactly plan to move forward, saying that it's going to alleviate putting more retail with such a tight area in there.
Thank you very much. I'll give the applicant owner a brief response.
The first point I would like to make is that the existing shopping center is overparked, as Jeremy pointed out. It will still be overparked. Overparked or underparked? Overparked. So overparked.
In other words, there are more than sufficient parking spaces.
There's more than enough parking today, and even with the existing proposed development, there will still be more than enough parking. The second point I would like to make, and it's fully within the parking requirements, according to building code. The second point I would like to make is that the development that we're proposing is is on the opposite side of the property from where... So the gentleman here is from 7-Eleven. His store is here. The parking that we're proposing, which is underground, is this. This whole section is here. So it's completely on the other side of the property and underground. Furthermore, I'd like to point out, to their point, that the parking is tight up here because of the yoga studio, for example. The yoga studio is going to be moving into a 1,500 square foot space down here. We already have an agreement with her to move down there. She wants, she has a space upstairs here that's 3,000 square feet. She wants a smaller space. So taking her and bringing her downstairs is going to alleviate the parking issues up here. And finally, one of the reasons why parking is very tight upstairs, despite the fact that we have plenty of parking downstairs, is that nobody wants to go downstairs because it's unsafe, it's dark, there's nothing going on down there. So we feel that by building these spaces downstairs, we're going to activate the lower level, which would, I hope, entice some of the other tenants from upstairs to park downstairs because there'll be things going on down there. There will be other, there'll be stores down there, there'll be other things going on. It'll be safer. So I think that would furthermore alleviate the parking issue upstairs that these gentlemen are concerned about.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public comment, and I think I'm going to start, and then we'll go to you, Commissioner Quinn. This was abayed at my suggestion last month when Mr. Higgins came in after his presentation. I had three concerns, which I said were parking, parking, and parking. I've taken a really close look at this, and at my request, Mr. Higgins went back and met with the mayor pro tem. We've also met with the tenants and landlord. And I agree with you that the parking issue seemed to be isolated or concentrated on the east side of this area, closer to Durango Drive. It looks like there, well, it doesn't look like, there are sufficient spaces, and that is according to code. You meet that minimum requirement. So I don't see that this is going to impact the parking issues that are on the east side. However, as a result of those discussions with the landlord and various tenants, there is some communication going on. And it looks like there are some things in the works that can alleviate some of the parking issues that are there. So I guess what I'm saying is I appreciate the efforts following through with my requests. And as a result of what's happened over the past month, I'm satisfied that this can work, and so you will see my support on this. Commissioner Quinn?
I just wanted to say that I'm also satisfied that this is going to work. But I really don't feel in the last month you sat down and really informed these men as to what's going on because I think had you, they probably would not have been here tonight, or they would have, I don't know. I think your communication with your tenants needs to improve dramatically because they don't, I don't feel like they have even heard from you from the time our chairman, Mr. Moody, asked you to meet with them. But that's just my own personal thoughts. And the other thing I want to know, is that hookah lounge upstairs, the hookah, or is that downstairs?
That's upstairs, but they've moved out.
Oh, they're not there anymore?
No.
Okay. So anyway, I'm just suggesting better communication with your tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I haven't been to this building, and I'm still confused on how this underground drive-through is going to work. It just sort of seems very clustery. And from your diagram, it doesn't really show... Like, is it going to be like a, on that picture there? You know, how many cars? And you say fast-food restaurant, like a McDonald's? Or is that what you mean by a restaurant? Drive-through?
It's going to be something smaller, but we also reconsidering the idea of building a drive-through and just building additional tenant spaces.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can really agree.
We're having a hard time hearing you. Could you step in front of the mic?
It would be a smaller, a smaller, a smaller drive-through. Yeah, we spoke with Jimmy Johns. They wanted, I think, 1,200 square feet, something smaller like that, a quick sandwich shop. But at the same time, we've also been considering other options and in terms, we may not even build a drive-through down there.
But at this point, you don't know who's coming in?
I'm sorry?
You don't know who's coming in?
No.
Okay.
At this point, we have, at this point, we have an agreement with the yoga, with the yoga store upstairs to come downstairs.
That's fine. I think his question was isolated to who was coming in.
Yeah, well, my question out says, well, we're approving you to have this special use permit to create a drive-through for a restaurant. And now you just said that we might not even put a restaurant, or a drive-through there at a restaurant. So I'm not sure what we're approving here today.
You're still approving the drive-through. It's the special use to have the drive-through. The specific tenant's not in, but the use permit's still an actionable item.
I got you. But, you know, it'll make a difference if you're talking about, you know, a very high-traffic tenant that you're looking to bring in there, something.
It's within a parking garage, so it's not going to be like a McDonald's. It's going to be somebody that's going to have more of a, you know, a delivery system or, you know, a smaller sandwich shop than a high-profile McDonald's that wants a full storefront.
And you're also saying that, once you put this drive-through in there, there's, so you could park, this is all underground, this whole area here?
Yes, this is part of the open-air garage. This corner would be built out with some tenant spaces, so some walls would come up where those kind of blue areas are. And then drive-through would kind of go in between the buildings. And where this outside kind of dash line is, is where the outside edge of that parking garage is, right along this line. So this is all enclosed within that parking garage. So a person that comes to the drive-through is going to enter into the parking garage and then go in between these two kind of remodeled spaces into a drive-through lane. And then they exit out of the garage into the kind of Giuliano, which is a kind of a cul-de-sac right now, where people come in to go into the garage and then go up to the back of the building.
And then what happens, and you're driving traffic over here to, what's that street, Juilliard?
Yeah, Giuliano.
So you're driving traffic to Giuliano. What plans do you have for traffic here? And we aren't, we aren't...
It's a little cul-de-sac that's not used by anyone but the shopping center. So it's primarily people driving out of the parking garage, and there's a stop sign at this intersection. So when a person comes out the drive-through, they have an area where they can stop before driving into Giuliano.
And then all the other people who are exiting the garage, where do they exit?
They're exiting back here, or...
So they'll exit where this entrance is? So potentially, you're going to have entrance and exit. And people coming to this entrance, exit, people coming to this drive-through, sort of?
If you have people coming out onto Giuliano, they'd come to this intersection. And if it's clear, it's pretty much clear all the time right now.
Then what happens if you do get a real popular place, and the traffic loops around, and it goes to out on Juilliard?
It back up the drive-through. A person sitting here at the drive-through can't exit the drive-through until they have some kind of way to get onto Giuliano.
It just seems like you're creating, you're jamming to me. Maybe I need to go out there and walk in and take a look at it. Because it seems like you've got a lot going on in that very small area, trying to make something happen that is not really, you know, you're putting a, you know, round peg into a square box type of mentality, or square peg into a round box.
Right now, that area is used for a trash enclosure. So right now, there's...
Used for trash?
Yeah, there's a, there's an existing trash enclosure.
Which will still be there?
No, it's being removed as part of the drive-through. Right now, this is the existing kind of floor plan. There's a trash enclosure right here where a dump truck can pull up trash and stuff. So we're removing that, and this is going to be part of that tenant space. So it's not like a major road. It's kind of a private drive where you're exiting out onto Centennial.
Anything else, Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cherry?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Is there anything being done? I like the idea of bringing the yoga studio downstairs and getting people downstairs parking. Is there anything through the lease that kind of designates where tenants can have customer parking or signage that's going to be there at the site?
I'm sorry, is there anything in the lease that can what?
That's going to designate customer parking or employee parking or signage on the site that's going to help, you know, people that are coming to this yoga studio or future tenants that are going to be coming to the site? So you're not overcrowded on the ground floor for, you know, other tenants that are there?
Yeah, so we're going to...
Sir, I really need you to step in front of the microphone. We're having a difficult time here.
Yeah, signage has been a concern. So we've agreed to put signage along Centennial. We've agreed also to put signage on the back of the building, so it has more visibility on 215, which is right behind the building. You know, I think just anything that we can do to activate... I mean, literally, there's nobody parking downstairs. There's 100 spaces, or 100-plus spaces downstairs now that nobody's using. The entire area is just kids breaking lights that I have to repair over and over again, damaging equipment. So I just feel that the more that we can activate this space, it's just going to be better all around for alleviating parking issues upstairs and making the lower level safer and more useful.
And that's been what I've found as well. That is, more people need to move from this east side. Work with the landlord of this building. They have underground parking available, you know? It'll shield their car from the sun. It'll alleviate the parking problem that we're having up on the ground level. And so I think it's a nice workaround. Commissioner Quinn?
Excuse me, I just, the men in the back, what businesses do they have in your building? What type of business do they operate?
One of them is 7-Eleven and...
In the building? On the corner? So you operate the 7-Eleven on the corner?
Building A.
Okay.
That's the very first building on the...
And how long have you been in the building?
I've been there six years. I've been there since the building was built. I was the first tenant there.
And have these men always been your landlord?
No, this is my maybe sixth landlord, I think, in that time period.
Okay, so...
Hang on, let this gentleman answer. What building you...
There's been constant changing with the landlord and the reputations and sensitivities of the company who's owned that plaza. So we've been constantly going back and forth with different people about this parking issue. It just seems not...
Hang on, sir. If you'll just answer which building...
Oh, we're, I'm from 7-Eleven too.
Okay, so both are, all right.
Yeah, so we're both from 7-Eleven.
Let's stop right there. Commissioner Quinn?
Okay, I'm just going to make a comment. I feel that you're kind of designing it as you go along here. I mean, like, you don't know if the yoga's coming up or going down, the hookah's gone, this... But I wanted to ask you, is there an elevator in that building?
Yes, there's an elevator right here.
So I'm just not going to support it tonight because I just feel like you've, you're kind of developing it right in front of our eyes. And I feel a lot of loose ends, and I feel very lack of communication with your tenants. So I'm sure it's a great project, but I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't feel that they've designed this in front of us. I feel that this has been designed, put on paper, it's gone through staff. Staff's recommending approval. Commissioner Moody had serious concerns about parking. He went out, looked at the parking. The parking garage, there's nobody parked there. You look online, or you look at our backup data, even the pictures when the staff went out there. And we know that staff doesn't work on the weekends. They go out during regular business hours. So it shows that there's one car parked in that whole parking garage. I was a little concerned about how you're bringing in cars and bringing it back out. But now looking at this better, looking at the aerials, it's a cul-de-sac, it's not going to be producing, I mean, there's zero traffic on that cul-de-sac. I mean, the only traffic off that cul-de-sac is coming from you. And I do appreciate the concerns with the parking that you have at your 7-Eleven. But if they build this, that could help you. I mean, because this is taking traffic to the other side of the parking, or of this commercial center. And when yoga comes through, yoga's going to produce a lot of people. If we can get that yoga out and put that in the parking garage and encourage them, instead of parking right in front of the 7-Eleven, encourage them to go over there, I think it might help your parking situation. No matter what goes in front of that building, whether it's a law office or whatever, it's going to be producing a lot of traffic in front of parking or building A. I think staff got it right. Let's move them over to the other building, get some of that parking out from in front of your building, and I think this could help you. That's just my opinion. So if there's no other comments, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, on item number 21, abeyance, SUP 61031, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 21, please vote. Motion carries.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, on item 22, abeyance item SDR 61034, I move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, please vote.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, I hit yes by mistake. I meant no. Sorry.
That motion carries, noting the change from yes to no for Commissioner Quinn. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items 21 and 22 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, moving on to related items 23 and 24. Item 23 is VAR 61297. The applicant is Armando Monares. The owner is Villia I Wait. For possible action on our request for a variance to allow 11 parking spaces, where 13 parking spaces are required on a property located on the north side of McWilliams Avenue, approximately 105 feet west of F Street in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Item 24 is SDR 61298, for possible action on our request for a site development plan review for a proposed six-unit, three-story multifamily residential building with waivers to allow a five-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter, where 10 feet is the minimum required, and a four-foot buffer along a portion of the east perimeter... and a Four-Foot Buffer Along a Portion of the East Perimeter, Where 6 Feet is the Minimum Required. Also in Ward 5, Staff Recommends Approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff notes that the parking shortage associated with the variance is due to the handicap parking requirement, and finds that this is adequate cause to support the variance. Additionally, the plans are in conformance to the city's goals regarding infill development. Staff's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name and address again, please.
Armando Monares, 3521 Gloucester Gate, Las Vegas, Nevada 89122. This, my family owns this piece. The owner is my sister. We've tried to develop this before. We got hit with a downturn, so we couldn't do it. And we felt this was a time to try it again. We're trying to go with six units, three are two-bedroom, three are three-bedroom. It's meant to be a rental apartment. There is multifamily right next to us as well. We think this will actually enhance the area. If you're familiar with the area, it's a lot of old buildings and old construction, or a lot of vacant land around there. And we feel this would be a good thing to have in the area.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment, if anyone wished to be heard on either of these items. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this on the planning commission. Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you. Can I have a point of clarification? It seems like we should be taking item 24 prior to taking item 23. Because if 24 doesn't get approved, then there's really no sense of giving a parking variance for 23. Is that valid? Somebody?
I think you would need to do the variance first, and then approve the site plan, because I think the site plan is based on the variance of parking, isn't it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It does seem backwards, but in reality, this is the way that it needs to go. Because you're right, the site plan doesn't work without the variance, and so you couldn't approve the site plan and then deny the variance after you approved the site plan, because it won't work, right? So you gotta deal with the variance first.
Okay. Thank you for that point of clarification. Sir, have you had a neighborhood meeting on this? I live-
No, sir.
I travel down there, you know, daily, multi, multiple times a day. And have you had a neighborhood meeting?
No, sir.
You have not?
No, sir.
Okay. One, that would be your first move. There's no way I can support this without you hosting a neighborhood meeting, and getting your neighbors and constituents in the radius sets allowed it to weigh in on this. And two, I think, I'm not sure, I haven't spoken with the councilman, so I can't say what his office told you or not. The issue that I have with your particular project is the density.
It's a what, I'm sorry?
Is the density. Is that fact that you're gonna build a high-rise apartment structure, in technically, a residential, low-density area. And although that area does need development, yes, but you can't take away the fact that you're surrounded by low-density homes that are there. And if I was living next to you, I wouldn't want a six-unit, three-story apartment complex coming up, looking into my house and looking in the back of my yard. That's the issue that I have. And so I would urge, if you want me to support it, then I would urge you, one, to have a neighborhood meeting, two, to work on the density and the height level of that. Because I can't support it the way it is now. But that's just me.
May I speak on that?
Please.
The density is within the density allowed, the sound, the height is within the height allowed for the zoning and the land use. On the west of us, it's multifamily. I don't remember if it's 12 units or 10 units on the west of where I'm proposing six units. So on the east, there is a single residential home, and where the building sits back, it doesn't look into the house, but it does, you would see into the back.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're talking about the west, then, over by McWilliams, between McWilliams and Washington. Those are low, one-story units that you're referring to.
They are one-story.
And so that's a big difference. And I'm trying to think, I don't think, and I could be wrong, that there are any two-story units over there. You buy the mosque, and then, you know, you're there, F Street and that corridor there. But I don't believe that there's any two-story buildings.
Next to me, there is not. The apartments, they're all on one story.
Yeah, they're all one story.
But there are, there are a lot of them.
Yeah, there are. There are, there are. And they've been there for a very long time.
Yes, so density is-
But density height-wise, issue that I have. And that is, that would be a big concern. But first, you have to get your neighbors involved, and I give you some advice, you know, the neighborhood is a neighborhood where you're gonna have to do some walking and knocking on some doors personally, because you can send out notices, which is fine, and I think that's important. But if it was me, I would go door-to-door and get some support from the people who are living in these, in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you. A comment was made regarding the waiver of the variance for parking from 13 to 11 because of the handicap spaces. You had to make additional handicap spaces that are larger, is that what?
No, when I went through the initial review, through planning, I pointed out to them in the code for the R3, that handicap is not required unless you are having a unit designed for ADA for handicap. I stated to them, I wasn't intending to have a unit designed specifically for handicap, but they told me the building, Department of Safety, wouldn't approve it unless they had a handicap unit, and I could do a variance, you know, pay the fees for the variance, and do a variance, and that way I could get the handicap, and building and safety department would support my application. I didn't have to do it, they suggested I did in order for building to support it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Cherry?
Mr. Chair, through you. I think this'll, it'll be a wonderful project for the neighborhood, and, you know, I'd have a hard time supporting a project that didn't have an accessible unit or a handicap stall associated with it, especially in multifamily. So I see the need for the variance, so I will be supporting the application. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I can support this as well. I appreciate Commissioner Carrer's idea about the neighborhood meeting, but, you know, neighbors were noticed about tonight's meeting, and I don't see anyone here protesting this. It's the right type of views for the zoning on this property, and so I can support this as well.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I concur with all those comments made, and also, this is right in RDA Expansion Area B, so therefore, additional funds will be coming into our RDA that we're talking about earlier. So, you know, maybe more funds could be spent in that neighborhood.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion. My motion is to not accept staff's approval for agenda item number 23, VAR 61279.
Okay, so with regard to item 23, the motion is for denial. Keep in mind, a yes vote is to deny. Please vote. Okay, that motion fails. Therefore, I'll entertain an alternative motion.
Mr. Chairman, item 23, VAR 61297, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. The motion is to approve item 23. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for agenda item number 24 to deny staff's recommendation for SDR 61298.
Thank you. Motion is to deny item 24. A yes vote is for denial. Please vote. The motion fails. An alternative motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, item number 24, SDR 61298, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Please post. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, mine was supposed to be yes. I apologize.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Motion still carries, noting the change in the vote from no to yes for Commissioner Quinn.
Mr. Chairman, items 23 and 24 will be heard at the City Council meeting on December 16, 2015.
Thank you. Moving on to item 25, SUP 61096. The applicant is Felipe Haro Limon, and the owner is Village Center Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing 1,549-square-foot restaurant with a waiver to allow a 334-foot distance separation from a school where 400 feet is the minimum required at 1,002 North Rancho Drive in Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use is within 400 feet of the separation requirement from a school. Staff supports the requested waiver of this distance separation, as the closest access route from the site to the school is severely restricted. Furthermore, this location was previously approved for on-premise sale of beer and wine. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of a special use permit. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, fellow commissioners. My name is Diana Marquez. My address is 2540 South Maryland Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada 89109. I've been asked by Mr. Limon to present him on his behalf due to a language barrier. And again, I'm here for the request for the special use permit for the beer and wine cooler that was previously obtained by the previous owner years ago. As I have here, and again, in regards to the information and doing here, the research, I have here a current map. He understands of the clearance from the school. It's measured, should be at 400 feet, but it's currently measured at 355 feet. It's located northeast of the school. Also, there is no direct distance from the school onto about 1,875 square feet. He's aware that there's other two establishments that now serve alcohol with no issues, that is not located next to the supermarkets. His location is request that he already has there. They're already, it's next to the supermarket, and he's asking, of course, as you can see, the clearance of the restaurant, it's, you know, far from the school, and there's also a camisal restaurant that is there. So he's asking for approval for the beer and wine. He feels that this would help his revenue to serve. And again, it's only going to serve beer and wine with food, okay? He asks that he can be considered to allow him to move forward. To restate his beer and wine, that it was previously already given by his previous owner. He understands the law stipulations to ensure the safety and security of the community. Mr. Limon believes this will create job opportunities for the community, and to continue the growth of the economy.
Thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment, if anyone wished to be heard either for or against item 25. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very familiar with this area, although I have not had the pleasure of visiting the restaurant, which I will, hopefully, soon. I've been to the supermarket and shopped in this area since I was a newborn. And it's a very resident, I mean, a very commercial area. It's, I understand why Mr. Limon would want to have beer and wine there. So I'm in support. I wish you all the best of luck.
Great.
Thank you. Unless there's any more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to approve agenda item number 25, SUP 61096.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item 25. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item 26, SUP 61299. The applicant is Marcus Scrizi. The owner is Durango Sahara LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment within a proposed 2,537-square-foot restaurant with 800 square feet of outdoor seating area, and a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from an individual care center licensed for more than 12 children, where 400 feet is required, at 8615 West Sahara Avenue in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject location previously maintained a restaurant with service bar license, which expired on October 1, 2014. The applicant is seeking to establish a beer-wine cooler on-sale use at this location in conjunction with a proposed Italian restaurant. Staff finds that the proposed use can be conducted in compatible and harmonious manner with the rest of the shopping center, is recommending approval of the application and associated waiver. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of this item? Normally, I would trail this, but we only have three items left, so someone want to make a motion to obey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item 26, SUP 61299, I'd make a motion to obey this to the December 8, 2015 planning commission hearing.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 26 is obeyed to the next meeting. Moving to item 27, SUP 61410. The applicant is Doral Academy. The owner is the Howard Hughes Company LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for an alternative parking standard to allow 502 parking spaces, where 560 spaces are required for a proposed primary and secondary school at the southwest corner of Alta Drive, Alta Drive, and Sky Vista Drive in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, submitted parking demand analysis is based on an Institute of Transportation Engineers study data, which uses a rate of parking spaces per student rather than the parking spaces per classroom to sport its alternative standard. In addition, the school's administration would institute a parking program that restricts the number of students parking passes to ensure that 502 spaces remain adequate. Based on this parking program, staff recommends approval of the alternate parking standard with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Doral Academy in this matter, which is a charter school, which is going to be located up here in the Summerlin Master Plan Community. We provided staff with the information with respect to our request. We ask you to follow staff's recommendation for approval, and I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have with the project.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open this for public comment, if anyone wished to be heard.
Question.
Come on up.
I'm Mary Gorsht, and I'm a homeowner at 521 Signal Peak Street in Las Vegas, Nevada. And I was not aware of what was being developed, other than that it was to be luxury housing in a low-impact area for our builder. And we've been there, it'll be two years in January. And this is what we received the last week and a half in the mail. And we back to, is it Sky Vista Drive? And so our view would be, I'm assuming, a parking lot. The red rocks are there, it's very beautiful, but that was a concern of ours when we purchased there. We are on a slope, so we're at the top of the slope, and then it meanders up even higher. And I'm not sure, I haven't seen anything. I've looked, I've tried to investigate what this whole property looks like, or what the proposal is, but I haven't found anything to review further on even the school, and how high it will be, how many stories it will be. We have a second story, and we have windows above that will overlook all of this. We have a second story, and we have windows above that will overlook all of this, and I guess five hundred and so, you know, parking structure, all of the traffic, we were not, you know, buying into at the time, so that's a big concern for us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this item? I'll give the applicant time for a response.
If I could get your attention quickly on the overhead here, what I have is a site plan here, if we could zoom in a little bit, thank you. You have Alta, which runs in this area here. This is Sky Vista Drive. This is going to be Sun Creek Road, and this is going to be Cross Bridge Drive located here. My, there is a residential subdivision over here, as I think the young lady mentioned, in this area. With respect to ingress and egress for the school itself, as you're coming down Sky Vista Drive, your ingress and egress is going to be on Sun Creek Road, and it's going to be over here off of Cross Bridge Drive also. The buildings itself is your prototypical, you may be familiar with this, on Sky Point Drive, located up here in the northwest section of the city of Las Vegas, sort of similar buildings, two-story buildings for elementary, middle, and high school in this area. With respect to views, and all due respect, as you guys know, views are not a legally protected type of right. We are going to be building within the code of the master plan itself that's out there, and we're not asking for any height waivers or variances whatsoever. The parking itself, and I could explain that fairly quickly, is when you, what staff has mentioned, when you go through the ITE requirements, they base the studies off individuals who come into the classroom itself and not the classrooms. In the city of Las Vegas, they base the parking requirements off the number of classrooms and get, and assign a number. When you go through Clark County, when you go through city of Henderson, the city of North Las Vegas, they all have different requirements, which are significantly lower requirements for parking requirements in the city of Las Vegas. Those were the findings behind staff's support. As you know, before we even can get to this stage, you have to go through the Summerlin Advisory Committee, so to speak, and review and so on, so it's, this is a process that's been started for a very long time, and as you know, when you come into a master plan community like Summerlin, it is a long process, and everything gets looked at, so we've been through many reviews and going to where we are today. We appreciate staff's recommendation. If need be, I could still continue to speak with the young lady to explain any other parts or questions that she may have, but with respect to the views itself, I don't, I don't know what would be impacted or not, but as I mentioned before, it's our typical two-story building that the Turner Agassi Group is going to be proposing here.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll close the public comment and open this for discussion on the commission. Commissioner Quinn?
How many houses is in her, in their housing development? Is it a big neighborhood?
Yeah, it's, 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 yes, it's a big neighborhood in, in that area. I don't know how many homes are out there.
Okay, well, I just think, I'd like to make two suggestions. The first suggestion would be to vote on it now, tonight, as it is, and then you hold a neighborhood meeting between now and council so that these people are more informed, and then that way, they can come to council, you know, in numbers or, or not at all because you've pleased them. Or we hold it, and you have a neighborhood meeting, and then you vote. So I just think that, I think somehow you gotta, you know, you're so good with the neighbors, I'm, you know what I mean, Bob? I really think that this is affecting their lifestyle, but I think that it's such a great project and such a great school, that I think that if, if you work with them, they're going to work with you, but, you know, they're a little shell-shocked that this is going up in their backyard, you know what I mean? So how about if we vote? What do you think about that, Mr. Moody? And then let them have a neighborhood meeting, or hold it and have a neighborhood meeting, even though I know staff is for it and everything, and everybody loves it, but we've got families here that didn't even know what, you know, what it's going to look like or what it's going to be, and these are young families that have invested their future in that neighborhood, and I think they should have more information.
Thank you. We're going to continue discussing before we have a vote, so Commissioner Trowbridge?
I was simply going to say that I would prefer option A, which was vote on it and then expect that there be a neighborhood meeting prior to the item hitting this county, or the city council agenda.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Slottman.
And maybe this is a question for Bob Gronauer through you. The city referral group is scheduled to review SDR for the project, for the primary and secondary school on ten twenty-eight fifteen. Do you know what that means?
There, there are, when you're dealing with the master plan community such as Summerlin, they have various levels of approvals that you need to go through, and I am going to believe in, I hope staff can help me here, that that process I was not a part of, and I believe that is with the consultants and the technical side of going through the project itself, and as I mentioned in my previous discussion on the rebuttal, mentioning that we've gone through a lot of these processes to get to the approvals to get to where we are today. So I'm presuming that everything went well, if that meeting was scheduled, but I know Mr. Lowenstein here will probably correct me if I'm wrong.
And, Mr. Chairman, question for Mr. Lowenstein through, through you. Has SDR already been submitted, or will SDR be submitted, or is it even required due to the area of incident?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the Summerlin, Summerlin Master Plan Community has a development agreement that it entered into with the city of Las Vegas, and within that has development standards which call out the development review process for projects such as schools as well as commercial development, and those, that process is called city referral group, and it's in lieu of a site development plan review which would come before a planning commission and city council. That is the review that occurred and was finalized on ten twenty-eight fifteen. That requires the master developer to vet the project and give their approval letter to the city before we accept the application, and then we go through the review process against the development standards, and then issue an approval letter. Is, basically, the city referral group is composed of city staff members and the Howard Hughes Group, and that, as you see in the staff report, has occurred on ten twenty-eight fifteen. Before you is for the alternate parking standard.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
I do have a quick follow-up question for staff, and that is, with the city referral group in lieu of the SDR, is there a public notification that goes out so that neighbors can attend?
As part of the development agreement and the development review process, it's not a publicly noticed, meaning like the notice cards which you would receive for the special use permit in a thousand-foot radius. We do have a scheduled meeting schedule that is available on our website, but it's not a published agenda that I'm aware of. I'll double-check for you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're ready for a motion.
If I may.
Please.
Chairman, in regards to special use permit sixty-one-four-ten, I'd make a motion to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item twenty-seven. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you.
What I'll do is I'll work with the neighbors and go through this, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Item twenty-eight is SDR six-one-two-nine-one. The applicant owner is Jim Marsh American Corporation. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review for a proposed twenty-nine thousand two hundred eighty square-foot motor vehicle sales, new use, and a waiver of town center development standards to allow service bays to face a public right-of-way at the southeast corner of Centennial Parkway and Riley Street in Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff supports the waiver as the service bay doors in question would be screened by landscaping and a block wall. Staff finds this request is compatible with adjacent uses and is designed in a manner that is harmonious with existing development and recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Richard Threlfall, sixty-five-twelve West Diablo. I'm the architect, and Mr. Marsh is here with me today, and so, it just seems to be a basic thing about the service bays facing a public way towards Riley to the west, but we already have a existing six-foot-high masonry screen wall and landscaping, and there's no development to the west of the property, so I think it's pretty reasonable. Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Marsh?
Jim Marsh, twenty-four forty-five East Sahara. We just asked for your approval. I don't think it's a major thing. I don't think it's quite as controversial as last time I was there.
No, no, it isn't. All right, I'll open this for public comment. Is anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and let me just say, I like the project. We welcome another dealership within the, in Centennial, so you're going to see my support on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nice to see you, Mr. Marsh. My other question is just, is there going to be a lot of noise, you think, in your opinion, that will disrupt anybody in that area? Neighbors or anybody? Nothing, right? It's more?
A noise issue?
Yeah.
No, not really, yeah.
That's all I was wondering, because we had a-
There's, there's no, there's no close residential around. I think we're, I don't think that's an issue.
Thank you, sir. I'll be supporting it.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item twenty-eight, SDR six-one-two-nine-one, move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item twenty-eight. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item twenty-eight is final action unless appealed to city council within, city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, the final public hearing item is item thirty, SDR six-one-five-zero-two. The applicant is Nevada Hand Incorporated. The owner is Hand Property Holding Company. For possible action on a request for a major amendment of an approved site development plan review for a proposed three-story, two-hundred-twenty-eight-unit multifamily apartment development with a waiver to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer between proposed interior property lines where five-foot buffers were approved at five-oh-one North Lamb Boulevard in Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, on May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, a site development plan review for this property was approved by the planning commission. Since that approval, lenders financing this project have asked the developers to split the proposed apartment site into two parcels. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a few minor revisions to development. Staff finds that this request remains compatible with existing development and recommends approval.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Bob Feibleman with Nevada Hand, two ninety-five East Warham Springs. We agree with staff's recommendations, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Is anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, we can discuss this on the commission and vice chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I reviewed this. I remember this from when it come through the first time. Don't have any problem with the request. If there's no other comments, ready to make a motion?
Please do.
Mr. Chair, item number thirty, SDR six-one-five-oh-two, move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Motion is to approve item thirty. Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirty-one is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Appears we've emptied the gallery, so I don't see any speakers, do any, I'll close the public comment. Do any commissioners wish to be heard on this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, that concludes our agenda for this evening, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.